Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Meet the Candidates event for the Milton Town Council Member Election. Both of the candidates were invited. This event was organized and moderated by the League of Women Voters of Saratoga County. It will be recorded and posted on the League's website and also on vote411.org. League rules require that if a Meet the Candidates event is recorded, it must be broadcast or rebroadcast in its entirety. My name is Anne Marie Pendergast. I am a member of the League of Women Voters of Saratoga County. I live in the town of Greenfield, and I will be your moderator tonight. The League of Women Voters of Saratoga County is a nonpartisan, volunteer, political organization dedicated to the informed and responsible participation of citizens in government. The League never supports or opposes any political party or candidate. That has been League policy since 1920. Membership is open to anyone who is eligible to vote, so please consider joining your local League. We have received questions from the public in advance. These were reviewed by League members and selected to be representatives and to avoid redundancy. Questions of a personal nature are never included. Candidates, this is your opportunity to let voters know your stance on current topics and how you will address the issues facing the town of Milton. Please do not waste valuable time tearing down or labeling your opponent. Deal with the facts. In your closing, please do not put your opponent on the spot with no chance of reply. We have two timers for this evening's event. Timer one will hold up signs for the candidates to glance at. Timer two will be her backup. Green means one minute left, yellow means thirty seconds left, and red means time is up. The names of the two candidates for council member seat in ballot order are Michelle D. Judah and Eric A. Delnicky. Now it is time to hear their two-minute opening statements. In alphabetical order, the first to speak is Eric Delnicky.
Hi, everyone. I know you're out there, though. I can't see you. Before I begin, I want to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this event. We were talking offline earlier, and it's awesome that folks get to hear a little something about local elections. There's not a lot of information out there, and frankly, not a lot of organizations hosting something like this. So, thank you. Thank you for doing so. Thank you, Michelle, for attending and going through this process. And of course, I appreciate everybody who was able to log on or watch the event later. I am Eric Delnicky, a town of Milton resident for the last 25 years. I live here with my wife. I adore my family of four. I've raised my son and daughter here and love everything about this town. I've helped with local government for the past 20 years. The town board is a little bit new to me. I was appointed the position after a vacancy. Doc Blaisdell stepped down after many, many years on the town board, and I was blessed enough to interview and be able to take over that position for some time. So, for the last nine months, I have a 30-year marketing career at executive level, managing multimillion-dollar accounts and budgets, strategic creative and collaborative platformer as a result, problem solver as a result. You know, that's sort of what I bring to the table for this event. I pride myself on having a good rapport with people. I love helping. I love doing good. I love giving back to a town that has given so much to me. So, there's a lot I'd like to accomplish while on the town board. We can talk about that a little bit further this evening. I'm only one person, but I'm in a unique position to listen to you and be the voice of the community when we need it most. Tonight's platform is a perfect opportunity. So, here we go.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Michelle Judah.
Hi, everybody. Thank you to the League of Women Voters. This is an invaluable opportunity for the voters, and I'm sure it takes a lot of coordination on your part to pull this together. So, appreciate your efforts year in and year out to do this. And I likewise would also like to thank Eric Delnicky. He's a super-nice guy. We've been in Milton together for about the same amount of time, 25 years. Our sons played on Little League together. We went to church together. His wife actually taught religion class to my youngest son. So, you know, if I have to have an opponent, he's a great one to have. So, appreciate what we've been doing here. I have experience professionally as an executive director of a statewide nonprofit. So, we provide services to families who are raising children with developmental disabilities. And my youngest son is adopted from foster care in Saratoga County. He allows me to talk about that and has a disability. So, my husband and I were licensed foster parents with Saratoga County for quite some time. I've been participating in town government. I care deeply, having raised my family here and wanting my future to be here, about what is happening here within our town. We're clearly at a critical juncture for the future of the town. We need diverse ideas and improved public engagement. What I commit to is communication that values public input and responsiveness to residents, thoughtful conversation and exchange of ideas with public-facing dialogue, diversity of perspectives, and ensuring representation of all, and also an awareness that no one's thoughts, including my own, are the only thoughts. There needs to be respect for the other elected officials that you serve with so that we can have the most productive conversations and decision-making.
Thank you. Now, it's time for questions. Candidates, you will have one and a half minutes to respond to a question. You are not required to respond. You may pass if you wish. Each candidate will be afforded two opportunities to request an additional minute during the question session for rebuttal or to expand on an answer. Please hold up your hand and wait to be acknowledged before you begin your extra minute. This may only be done during the question session. It may not be done for a closing statement. Questions will be directed to candidates in rotation so that everyone gets the chance to respond first. The first question will go to Eric Delnicky. First, this question. Describe, this is, there is a separate question about the possible adverse effects, so focus here on the benefits. Eric, you are muted.
The feed was breaking up. I don't know if it's on my end or with...
I can repeat the question.
I missed a portion of that. I apologize.
Yeah. If you can't hear me, just raise your hand. I'll repeat the question. Describe the benefits of the proposed town center, but please note there is a separate question about the possible adverse effects, so focus here on the benefits.
Well, the benefits of the town center, I mean, as long as Michelle and I have lived here, there's been, there's been a plan in place. 2001 was that plan. So, approximately the time we moved to town, a little bit, a little bit afterward. So, they're following through on something that I always sort of anticipated would be, you know, sort of finishing that area. There's some open spaces and some sidewalks that don't seem to go particularly anywhere. And if you're kind of really nifty to see something completed, a place we can all love and, you know, sort of feel proud of as something of our town, you know, I'll talk, we will talk later about some of the potential negative impacts of that. So, some of the benefits of that is, you know, you know, I'm not sure who will live there. I don't think it's going to be Michelle and I, but there's potential for some, you know, nice businesses that we could, you know, take advantage of, enjoy, and not have to travel particularly far to, to, to get there. But, but, you know, with that sort of growth, there are some, you know, tax benefits, not certainly the only benefit, but some of that will go towards parks and wrecks. I feel very greatly about balancing any, any sort of, you know, development or larger development with maintaining and keeping green space for everybody. And we've got some really good opportunities there. Town, next to town center at Town Hall, the Reimagined Milton Project is being proposed.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Your time is up. I'm sorry. Yep. You'll get, all right. The same question to you, Michelle. Describe the benefits of the proposed town center focusing on the benefits.
Sure. So, yeah, I think the question goes to the whole of the town center, right? Not, not just Milltown Center, which is a development that's currently being proposed with the 507 apartments and the four commercial pad sites. So, going back to when Eric and I were moving into town, you know, I had young children at the time that I was raising, and I did hear about a comprehensive planning process. And, you know, at the time, there was really nothing that was there. And the thought of having, you know, a grocery store, a place to get gas, there's definitely convenience, right, to having things that are nearby and accessible. And I think that, you know, everyone wants a comfortable community where there's parks and there's places to recreate and enjoy themselves. I think, you know, the benefit, the potential benefit is how that space gets built out, and if it becomes a place where we can do gathering as communities versus a focus on, you know, commercial development. And I think, you know, looking back at the comprehensive plan from 2001, it's very interesting to see that people were talking about the same things we're talking about now, the character of our town, not losing that sense of community and not having our town, you know, look like every other town that's on the map. So, I think the opportunity there is what exactly it is that we can build to bring us together in that space.
Thank you. This question will go first to you, Michelle. Describe any potential adverse effects of the proposed Milltown Center. For example, environmental impact or stress on the town's emergency services, schools, and infrastructure.
So, almost all of the above. I'm not completely sure that stress on the schools is going to be an issue from what I'm hearing at meetings, but I think that there's definitely concerns about environmental impact. Anytime you're bringing in a lot of blacktop impacting the way that the stormwater, you know, is managed and collects. I know I was at Sunmark Credit Union a couple of weeks back when we had a lot of rain and literally was standing in inches of water in their parking lot. So, there's a concern there. There's definitely a concern in terms of traffic impacts. Many residents are extremely concerned about what that does, you know, for the town. And then, again, just kind of what the overall character and environment is. Another concern, though, I think, that we have to think about is that, you know, the town takes over responsibility for the roads, responsibility if there are stormwater issues. You know, at some point, there, you need development. I'm not talking to anybody who doesn't want development in the town. We just want to be creative about it. And at some point, there's likely a tipping point, right, where the benefit of the taxes that are received are outweighed by the amount of money that's going out to manage all of this. And I don't think that we've carefully looked at that, or if we have, the public's not aware that we have. I hear the public asking questions about that particular issue, that tipping point all the time.
Thank you. Eric, you're next. Do you want me to repeat the question?
No, I think, I think I've got it. Thank you. Yeah, I mean, everybody, I think we all have very similar concerns, you know, traffic issues, the schools, the type of apartments that would go there are one- and two-bedroom. They're less likely to have kids, but there will certainly be children. You know, really, our community is no wildly different than other communities going through this kind of growth. How we manage that and how we handle that is, is going to be critical. You know, with that growth, again, there's always a balance. There will be, you know, money from each unit that will go towards green spaces. So, hopefully, we can gain some things where we've lost. You know, tax revenue comes with, you know, every house and every business, I imagine. Traffic studies were completed. There's no initial impact at the moment, but we should absolutely be diligent and stay on top of these things as, as, you know, a project like Milltown Center, you know, comes with a phased approach. So, I think we'll be able to stay on top of that. So, you know, a few, quite a few studies done and, you know, corrections being made ahead of that as opposed to behind it. You know, the plans have been cleared through planning and zoning pertaining to town codes. However, we are in a time where we are revisiting that, that, that comp plan. So, again, good time to be diligent. And they must meet town center guidelines, and we will be watching it very, very closely. I imagine a lot of our town folks will as well to, to be sure it fits, and nothing gets away from us in that way.
Thank you. Michelle is requesting an extra minute, so I'm going to give Michelle an extra minute on this.
Are you ready? Timer's ready. Okay. It occurred to me, a very critical issue that's of concern is affordable housing. The, you know, the apartments, the 507 apartments that are going in there are to be market-rate apartments. We are a diverse community. We should be welcoming to all that are in our community, and we should certainly be trying to provide assistance for people to, you know, step up and, you know, be able to thrive within our community. So, that is an issue, and again, something we're not looking at. We're not having the conversations we should have about how can we encourage development that includes some affordable units and also units for people with disabilities. And there's ways of going about that, and it just seems we're not even having those conversations. So, that's another significant concern I have about what's happening there right now.
Thank you. Okay, the next question goes to Eric first. What is your proposal for an efficient and transparent way of informing the general public of proposed new development? Going forward, how would you manage communications about Milltown Center?
Um, yeah, well, again, the 25 years, Michelle and I have been here, the town has come a long way, you know, the website, the way the board functions. It's a little bit less of a good old boys' network than it used to be, which I love hearing stories about, but I'm glad we don't have to endure. But this time of growth and change is when we need to be able to share information and collaborate the most. The website is much improved. Unfortunately, there's an incredible amount of information there, a lot of information to share, some of it very timely, some of it kind of goes dates back to the beginning of some projects. You know, folders can be as deep as 65 files deep. So, I think further enhancement of that website, leaning into some of the features that it has, something they've opened up recently is, you know, kind of signing up for what you would like updates on. I think that would be one great way to, to share information with people. But social media, Town Hall discussion, some of which are going on, workshops, digital newsletter function that the website has, if we can figure out a way to manage that and share information in a timely way, that would be much more cost-effective than trying to do a mailer every time something really important hits, and we want more people to know about it. So, I think, I think those are some of the ways we can, we can get the word out. And I am certainly up for any suggestion for some folks who have modern techniques. You know, everybody receives information differently. We want to be sure we can get information to them, especially in a timely manner.
Thank you. Michelle?
Sure. This is a great question. And I agree, you know, with Eric that there's been improvements on the website. I do believe that they've come after a lot of public comment and pushing about improving the way that communication comes from town to the public. I would add that another thing that had been asked for a great deal was the creation of the YouTube channel. So, that's another positive thing that is happening. But I am concerned when what's, you know, some of the meetings that were happening earlier this year about comprehensive plan, you know, there was a lot of work by the residents to get the word out, signs posted, you know, networking, and we shouldn't be relying on that. One of the things that I think that is a potential, one, I think the way that the public gets treated at every meeting impacts engagement, and hopefully, we'll have a little bit more time to talk about that and encourages people to be paying attention and listening. But I'm curious, and we need to look at it. There's a lot of money being spent on all of this development in our budget. So, I would be curious to know if there was some way for us to implement like a text messaging system so that residents could get timely notifications and do this as part of also emergency preparedness planning. That's something I'd like to hear more about in our town. But we might be able to look at developing something like that that would be responsive to what the public is asking for.
Thank you. Our next question will go to Michelle first. How will you handle the increasing traffic? Please address fixes for Rowland and Geyser.
So, you know, it's a tough question as to how to handle, how to handle that. We're at a point right now where, you know, we have projects that are in front of the planning board that are going to increase traffic in that, in that vicinity. Of course, we've had traffic studies done. We're trying to, we're being told that impact will be minimal. There's a lot of people who don't feel that that is the case. We, we really need, as all of us, not just the elected officials, but the residents of our town as well, to get behind what's going on with the comprehensive planning so that we can address and get in place zoning regulations that comes, you know, as the next step from comprehensive planning that really puts the fingerprint of what the public wants in that, in that area. And that, that's the way, you know, that we have to address that is through the zoning regulations and having a little bit of a better control, a better direction in terms of what's happening in regards to development.
Thank you. Eric?
Well, I'm glad to see some of that information gets out, and our website has information, again, a lot of information. Information is available to planning and zoning meetings. I wish more people would attend. You know, but as far as, as far as that particular intersection, we have a traffic study going on right now. And, and looking beyond it, Michelle, there's a $75,000 grant for that intersection through CRTC, the transportation folks. So, so, beginning to move in the right direction, evaluate what's going on there. There's certainly no guarantees, but we can, we do do our very, very best to mitigate, you know, some of the traffic that moves through the area, not all of which is from, you know, downtown or nearby, but a lot of towns kind of funnel through. So, if you're on that, if you're on that route, I'm sure you see it well, but it's an issue we're currently in the process of addressing and, and absolutely need to stay on top of. So, hopefully, more information to come, but, you know, we're, we've taken steps in the right direction well before anybody breaks ground and starts putting in units with, with more residents and cars.
Thank you. The next question is, based on the town plan survey, how will you respond to residents' desires for expanded outdoor recreational activities such as hiking, biking, playground visits, walking, and sports? Do you think the town should purchase additional land along the Kateras for public access to the creek?
Gosh, if there's, if there's, go ahead. Is this, this is...
Yeah, it's you, Eric.
Thank you. You know, they're, that's great. If there are, if there are green spaces and properties that can be purchased for some reason, and it sort of fits, yes, I think that's a great way to offset some of the, some of the growth, growth that's going on. Reimagined Milton is the closest, most obvious place where, you know, certain revenues and, you know, some of what comes from that development that we're all anticipating and what comes with it, where we can really begin to make a change. And that is for everybody, you know, some, some ball fields, some, some walking trails. I'm not sure you'll be able to pull a full marathon in that area, but that's great. That does not access water or fishing or rivers. But, you know, picking up properties without straining the town would be great. But we do have access along the Kateras Creek at Geyser Road and Rollins. The Woods Hollow purchase is another, another example of where, you know, the timing just worked out really well for us, 150 acres of walking trails and, and nature that's going to be left untouched. It was, I think, going to be, have some wood taken out of it, but there's definitely hiking and definitely fishing. And for those of us that like to be outdoors, maybe we'll find opportunities in the future for more.
Thank you. Michelle?
Yeah. I have to say that I agree with a lot of what Eric said in regards to that. I think there's a clear desire on the part of the community to have these green spaces and as much of them as possible. It almost seems like, you know, Woods Hollow, you know, we might say, oh, we've got Woods Hollow. There seems to be a wish to have more, this type of recreation, you know, that people can get out and exercise and be in fresh air. I think people want that more and more, even, you know, even since COVID. I think we're still craving that. In terms of, you know, should we purchase it? We do have a big project that's going on with Reimagined Milton, and there's going to be green spaces there and places to do, you know, very, you know, interesting things, community gatherings, you know, maybe some concerts or things. There's going to be space there, and I think we need to look at that. I think we should look at any options that we have because it is something that is important to the residents. I don't know enough about what the cost or the impact would be to say for sure one way or the other right now, that what we should do this, but this is the type of thing that should be discussed as part of the comprehensive planning process and full vetting done with the entire community so that we make sure that we're moving in directions and investing in things that matter, you know, matter to our residents.
Thank you. The next question is, how do you discuss issues that are raised by the constituents of the town verbally or in writing? Do all board members receive those inquiries and issues prior to the board meeting?
That's coming to me first, and I don't know because I'm not on the board. You know, it's one of the things that's been a little bit interesting as I think about how I might be able to contribute to, you know, the, you know, making our town a better place and making our town government function a little bit better is that it's very difficult for me to know what's happening, you know, behind, behind, you know, closed doors. I know that, you know, I've been a proponent and will continue to be a proponent that there needs to be more discussion at the meetings, meetings that have, it does seem that there must be conversations that are happening outside of the public meeting because resolutions come up, they're read. Is there any discussion? No. And then there's five unanimous votes. And I have, I have concern about that. So, I do think that we need to make sure that the residents' voices are being heard, that the public knows what the residents are bringing to the table, and that conversations, you know, that need to, that need to be in public are happening in that public space. But it's a difficult question for me to answer. I can just say that going to the meetings, it seems like much of the decision-making gets done outside of the meeting room without even the benefit of a, of a discussion that brings the public into awareness as to what went into the thinking to make the decision, what the options were and why we're deciding to go a certain route. And that is very problematic.
Thank you, Eric.
So, Michelle, I am there and still getting a little bit used to it. The, you know, people reach out to you in the darndest ways, or, you know, a handwritten note dropped into the, you know, the folder system that is the mailbox. Someone hits me up on Facebook. We do get telephone calls, and someone will take a message. And, you know, sometimes at these meetings, there's some public comment. You recognize somebody's needing more contact, more information. I try to quickly jump up and, and get ahold of them. You know, there are the public comment sections. I realize only so much can get accomplished. And, you know, as somebody who likes to gab away, I think three minutes is, is sometimes difficult, but again, depending on how many people and what type of, you know, comments there are, that can go on for a long time. But, yeah, I tend to agree. More information is probably better without inundating with people with information. There is a great deal of discussion that goes on, some of it sort of informal and, and in passing or a quick question. It's not the easiest thing, I guess, to document. But ultimately, you know, I thought about this, Michelle, that, you know, maybe for more of the critical resolutions, that somebody can say something briefly about some, some of what went into the thought process, some of the questions that were asked, some of the, some of the roadblocks that made it not so much any unanimous thing until it was discussed, talked about, and, you know, problems sorted out, or it was table to another time. So, so, there's, there's one opportunity I think we can share information.
Thank you. The next question is, the new comprehensive plan is underway, which may lead to new zoning laws. Do you support a moratorium on new building until the plan is completed? Eric?
I mean, generally speaking, I, I, I'm certainly not in, in the legal business. I, I mean, generally speaking, I, I, I've, you know, I'm certainly not in a, uh, in, in the legal business, nor am I a developer. I recognize some of what a moratorium can do in a, in a situation like this. They tend to be, you know, not longstanding and they're sort of used selectively. So, so I am personally afraid that if we, you know, put a moratorium on, on certain projects that are going around town, uh, in particular, um, Milltown Center, you know, the, the years it might take for a group of people to completely redo a, um, a comprehensive plan might, might not be covered by a moratorium. As well, generally, I'm not in favor of moratoriums, but I am certainly open to that discussion if there's, if there's some serious impact, serious concern, and, and, and some of those have been, have been, um, have been raised. But, um, you know, again, if there's some things being done within town guidelines as they stand now, and those guidelines are not likely to change for a project already in motion, you know, I'm a little less, little less in favor, but there are some, there's definitely some places, um, you know, further out, uh, around, uh, where we might see some solar arrays and such where there, there's still time to discuss what's going to happen there before, uh, before we get too far down that road. So there, there, there's a time and a place for them. I don't think we could use them for everything.
Thank you. Michelle?
Such an interesting question. Um, so first off, you, you can't do it for selective projects, right? That would be illegal. You can't do spot zoning where you say, you know, hey, Milltown Center, we're not going to go forward on that. But, um, you can do it for broad categories such as, you know, commercial development or residential development, and it is something that increasingly I've been giving a little bit of thought to. I do agree with Eric that, you know, this is not a, you know, something that anyone should go into lightly or quickly, or, you know, not well advised and, and really thinking it through. But there are towns around us that have used moratoriums, um, Clifton Park being one of them. Um, you know, so that's another Saratoga County, you know, large town, um, that uses them. And I was really moved to think about it when I attended the comprehensive planning meeting and the economic advisors attended, and they were really cautioning the, the, um, the advisory committee that we need to get it right. We need to get the comprehensive plan in place. We need to, you know, own what we want the zoning to be. We should not be, you know, accepting the projects and then talking about them after the fact. Is this going to work for us or not, what the developers recommending? We should be leading, we should be guiding the plan. And in that case, a short-term, you know, moratorium, they're usually for like six months, maybe they would go for a year, um, not affecting projects that have already come ahead. I'll take my one minute. Um, not affecting projects that have already come in front of the zoning board because I think as difficult as this can be for some residents to hear, you know, those board, those projects have come in good faith, um, under the current zoning, um, and people have invested a lot of money in them. And, you know, so you can't, you can't change that. They've come in good faith, we would need to proceed. But it would be possible to put a moratorium in and not accept further applications until we get to the point where we have hammered out what we want this comprehensive plan to look like and then have gone a step further is to start outlining what the zoning, um, should look like so that the planning board is working with the, the new vision. And those economic advisors, you know, said, you haven't ruined the town yet. They said that several times during the meeting. We really have to be thoughtful and we're, we're putting the cart before the horse by having an economic developer, development director, who's soliciting businesses without us having this plan in place.
Thank you. The next question goes to Michelle first. A portion of the town of Milton residents reside in the village of Boston Spa. How have you or how would you work on behalf of those residents as a town board member?
So I had the pleasure, um, to walk in the village a couple of weekends ago and, um, met with, um, quite a few people, um, in, in the village. And, you know, we were going to, um, people who are, you know, not registered in a particular party, introducing ourselves and having a little bit of a conversation. And most people were willing to have that conversation. And there were a lot of concerns that were being brought up, particularly related to the relationship between the town and the village, um, the taxes that village residents pay, um, you know, to the town, um, the rates of which, you know, had increased and people not really understanding what services they are getting for that. Um, there were conversations about, you know, plows stopping at certain lines and, um, you know, it, it, just people not understanding what, what that is. They're also concerned about our development because, you know, a lot of traffic comes down from Milton through the village to get to wherever they're going in Schenectady or Albany or wherever it may be. Um, so it was, it was an interesting day of really hearing about the need for, um, better coordination. Um, there seems to be some stress on the village, um, just because of, you know, uh, payments, you know, from, you know, working out the fire payments, the water districts. Um, there's definitely a lot that we need to do to be, um, cooperative and better neighbors and really look at how things are impacting people who aren't living in both of those spaces.
Thank you. Eric?
Uh, so, you know, this is, this is a great ques- be involved with the town board and understanding where we work independently from the, the village and where we, you know, work very, very closely. I, I always viewed them as one and the same. The village is, you know, predominantly in the town of Milton. So, so we're, we're, we're all in the same team as, as, as far as I feel. Um, and so I think that relationship is paramount. We, we do meet regularly, uh, both formally and informally. You know, I, I, I have a good, really good rapport with, um, other folks on the, uh, on, on the town board, Mayor Frank and trustee, uh, Bernadette in particular. And, you know, I get to in, in casual settings because, uh, the, the village hosts so many different fun events in, you know, that beautiful downtown that, you know, I, I get to attend and I, and I get to help. So, so there, there's a lot of discussion going on, but I, I think that relationship is so important. So the business that we share, um, you know, the, the, the negotiations and agreeing on, on budgets for certain thing like fire and water and library and, and pool, et cetera, you know, are, are, are really important. Really, it's really important to maintain that, you know, n- not so much for a couple cents this way or that way, but for the relationship, the longstanding relationship that, that, uh, that should continue. You know, the, the town has a, I mean, the village has a lot of great things that those of us up in town can, can go down and enjoy and, and vice versa, you know, but hopefully, um, Milltown Center has some establishments that they, they wander up to visit us with. So, so Mayor Frank could come out and buy us lunch and, and, and we don't have to go meet him there, so.
Thank you. The next question is, how will you engage with the public? How would you encourage Milton residents to engage in public conversations about Milton's future?
So, you know, we, 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 we covered this a, a, a little bit earlier, but there, there's definitely, um, there just, you know, definitely some conversation about, you know, getting more information and sharing more information. So, you know, ju- just to repeat some of what we have, again, continuing to improve with that website. But I love, um, you know, I love the, uh, the in-person, um, you know, sort of conversations that I can have. I, I'd like to talk with people and, you know, one of my friends was joking earlier about coffee time with Eric. Though, you know, I, I welcome that with anybody, a phone call, a sit down, a, a, a visit of some sort, but, but sitting and listening to people. So, um, you know, there, there's, there's a fair amount of conversation, a fair amount of sharing of information, but, you know, we, we definitely need more and, and, you know, I'm a bit hands-on, roll up my sleeves. And if it's visiting with one person or a group of people, uh, informally, without the whole entire board as a quorum, uh, I, I'm all for it. Um, I, 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 you know, keep looking for other ways to share information. It's a lot of information, needs to be get out there in a timely manner, and we need to take advantage of everything we can. It'll, it'll never be perfect for everybody, but if we get enough there and, and, and folks are sharing, we'll, uh, we'll, we'll improve. There's always room for improvement. We're never, we're never going to be perfect, but the closer we can get, the better it's going to be for all of us.
Thank you. Michelle?
So this goes back to something I touched upon a little bit before. I really think that engaging the community and building a better relationship where there can be more, um, dialogue, um, really goes back to what happens at every single meeting and how the public gets treated there. Um, there are times that I have certainly witnessed where, um, people do not have their questions, um, treated with the respect that they deserve. Um, sometimes people, um, get a response that's somewhat condescending or as if the public needs to be schooled. Um, we've been told that we don't need to ask questions, that we can just trust the process and trust the people and that all will be fine and we'll be happy. I've had my own personal experience as well as residents telling me that their emails are not always answered, their outreaches are not always answered. We need to do better in regards to that. Um, if people feel comfortable there, there's then that opportunity perhaps, you know, to have like a public listening session, maybe quarterly, where we get together and just hear what's on the mind of residents or address something that maybe people do need a little bit more help with understanding how it works or why it's working the way that it is. Um, there's just so much more that can be done. There's ways to get information out to the public, um, to make sure that they're able to meaningfully participate in public comment, um, that they, that they have the background they need to think things through and then contribute, you know, what's, what's needed. Um, so I, I would like to see, uh, some type of public forums that are happening where we're listening, um, you, and, and not one-to-one, not call me in the office and I'll talk to you about it. It needs to be in the public so that everyone can benefit.
Eric, do you want another minute?
Yeah, you know, i- i- it's a good thing. I, I, I hear, uh, I, I hear what Michelle's saying and I know, obviously, you know, there are times for better conversations. Um, you know, I, I, I do think there are some positives. Um, I, you know, I, 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 you know, if, if a phone call comes in and it's, you're not really sure who it gets addressed to, I hope somebody takes it and responds to somebody. Everybody deserves a response, even if it's not the one they're looking for, or at least it's acknowledged that they responded. You know, I, I, I know Supervisor Ostrander responds to every email. Um, that is certainly, uh, certainly a bar we should be hitting. Um, you know, a- a- again, there might be more opportunities for emails to the town or maybe adjusting public comment. Um, everybody, again, is invited to attend the planning and the zoning meetings and the town board meetings. That's our chance to, uh, cha- our chance to take part. I, I, I always thank folks for coming, um, and I try to be as attentive as humanly possible. Anyway, I, I can't speak to everybody else. There's a dessert, a diverse, uh, uh, number of people in town and diverse number of personalities on the town board at a town hall. So, you know, we, we do our very best, we could always, always do better.
Thank you. Um, the next question goes first to Michelle. How would you engage the ethics board regarding compliance with membership and reporting regulations of that board while maintaining its functional independence?
So the ethics board has a really, um, vital role, um, in our community, and I think we've lost sight of it a little bit in all that has been going on. And there's definitely reasons that we want to, you know, have an engaged, uh, ethics board and people to understand and know how to use it. Um, the, um, membership, you know, it has not been at full membership for quite some time. Um, they are not responding to, um, applications that come in, um, you know, for people who are interested in being a part of the ethics board. Um, so that is a challenge. We need to go back to our code about the ethics board and we need to make sure that we're following through on that. They have several vital roles. They are supposed to do an annual report. They're supposed to be by, um, annual trainings that are provided, um, to the, the town and the employees. I'm not really sure where any of that is and if it is happening. And I think there needs to be, you know, we, we need to make sure that the public's aware, um, of the role and the function. Um, they should be reviewing, there's supposed to be annual financial disclosures from our elected officials. Um, they should be reviewing that. Um, and quite honestly, I have no idea if any of that is being done. Um, it seems to have, um, just kind of become stagnant and it's dangerous when that happens. Um, they serve a vital role, um, i- in a, a check and balance system. Um, so we need to look into that.
Thank you. Eric?
I, it's, it's kind of a, a funny question in that, um, you know, we need, we, we do need to have a fully staffed and engaged ethics board, you know, how much the, the, the folks on the town board, you know, push that or influence that is, is certainly an ethical question. But, um, you know, the, the, we can't get overly involved with certain parts of it, but they have recently interviewed. My understanding is, uh, there's now a full board, um, you know, I'd love to circle back and confirm that, but, but that, that's what I understood last, and that would be a great, great thing. You know, it's, it's something that has to be in place. Um, we certainly need these checks and balance, um, you know, but the board has done, that, you know, had some of that discussion about that, but the, the, you know, the folks in, in, in charge of kind of interviewing and hiring have been on top of it, and the town attorney, which is, is probably in, in some situations of a better person to deal with filling, uh, ethics boards that are there to kind of police some of what goes on, um, on our board. So, so, you know, kind of staying in our swim lanes, but, but getting that taken care of and, and certainly allowing the opportunity for the process to be done properly. So I think, I think we're good and, uh, and, um, you know, as, as it should be, I, I think we'd all agree.
Thank you. The next question goes to Michelle first. Nope, I'm sorry, it goes to Eric first. Um, for rural areas, do you support enlarging the three hundred feet notification requirement for proposed new development to better reflect potential impacts in less populated areas?
Yeah, it's my understanding with town websites, um, you know, that, that rule to, uh, 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 you know, and to share information. I'm, I'm not a do the bare minimum type. I, I realize certain things need to be done, certain boxes need to be checked. If three hundred feet is, you know, the distance, you know, frankly, something like the Milltown Center might not reach anybody's home. So, you know, I'm for, um, um, certainly, you know, maybe picking the right distance, but going beyond what's the minimum required and being sure more people have the information they need. There's no reason to hide it. I don't think anybody would do that intentionally. So, so, you know, let, let's get to three hundred feet and beyond. Uh, I, I, I believe, uh, five hundred feet is standard down in, um, Boston, you know, and, you know, and we can look at how some other towns handle it, but it, it really not so concerned with precedent, but most concerned with doing the right thing. So, you know, folks should be aware of what's going on. Uh, you can live pretty far away from something and, uh, and, you know, want to, want to be part of the impact of it. And, and, you know, to, to, to the point of the question, I think there's some, some people live miles away from an area where they may be still be impacted or, or have an interest in, in some of the results, so.
Thank you. Michelle?
Can I go back to the ethics? Can I use a little bit of time for that?
It's your time.
Okay, great. Um, so the ethics, they, they have been interviewing candidates, but again, only at the insistence and persistence of the public, bringing this up at meeting, several meetings that I attended, that the ethics board was not functioning as is and asking questions. And finally, um, you know, something happened. I am not aware, um, that anything has come from those interview processes, but there, it at least has started. And I just also want to correct, the town board, if you look at the, um, the regulations, um, the town code regulations, um, absolutely has a role in, uh, can, can actually remove members from the ethics board. They have a duty to make sure that we have a functioning ethics board. Um, so the town can do that, it's not a question, Eric, as to whether, you know, that's right or, or wrong. Um, so there's that. Um, in regards to the notification requirements, that's another area where I think potentially, again, if we kind of get modern and look about a text messaging system, we'd be able to notify lots of folks.
Thank you. The next question is, do you support implementing a solar code to man- manage the influx of solar panels in the town? Michelle?
Sorry, I lost track. Um, yes, absolutely. I've actually spoke at some meetings about this. Um, I believe there's currently five solar projects, um, in the pipeline somewhere. I may not be right, I think it's three approved and two that are still, um, you know, working their way through the planning board. And I have some really significant concerns. Granted, I'm very happy that Milton became a climate smart community. I think we need to do more work on that because I'm not really sure we've done anything other than making, you know, the declaration that we make a pledge to do it. Um, I think we have to look at alternate energy and all kinds of things to protect, um, our, our environment. But there are, um, concerns that come up with solar, um, farms, the next step being the battery energy storage systems and, and. And, and we have not written any code. Again, we're not owning the process of what we want to have happen. What happens, you know, the, these panels expire, you know, there, you have to get rid of them. There could be fire. You need to be able to get water to that area. We should be writing that code. Town of Rotterdam put a moratorium in when residents were concerned about solar. And to their credit, they put those residents on a committee to write the code, make the recommendations to the town. And it took some time, but they did it and they now have a code and they're now welcoming those projects. And they applauded and, and honored those citizens for participation. We should be doing that in Milton.
Thank you. Eric?
Uh, yes, everybody should continue to participate. I, 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 I'm thankful when people could show up. I, you know, we know what we know. Uh, each of us are individuals. We only have one voice. We're elected to be the voice of the people. So we definitely want to hear things like that, opinions like that. If somebody's close to a lawyer and has some, some, some legal knowledge to share, that's, uh, that is, that is, that is good stuff. So there are plans in place for solar. There may be some there. The, some of the discussion around, you know, going beyond solar fields or solar arrays on properties that, that may be zoned for that are, are, um, the battery, um, the battery storage that can go with it. You know, they, they tend to be pretty large. I imagine if you live adjacent to it, in addition to the solar panels, it could be a little bit unsightly and with cars, with toys, with, uh, solar fields. Those are the things that can catch fire and burn. I, I, I don't love hearing our first responders referring to a fire like that as, as let it burn because they're such a toxic thing. They become a hazmat thing more than a fire thing. So, so yes, I'm, I'm up for, uh, looking at, at what codes we have now. Um, I, you know, this is more of a, a planning, uh, planning board thing, but since we're working in a comp plan, it's a good time to, to be discussing that. And if, if there is something concerning or, 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 you know, alarming, yeah, it's, it's a place a moratorium has been, uh, suggested by, um, you know, one of the local developers, John Munter during a, a, um, comp plan meeting. It's, it's very interesting to hear those things. So, yes, certainly worth reviewing and understanding. It's, it's, it's bigger than my yard.
Thank you. The next question is, what public transportation will you encourage for the town and how? And this one goes to Eric first.
I apologize. It, it glitched for a moment. Would you, would you ask that question again?
I can, I can repeat the question. What public transportation will you encourage for the town and how?
Um, you know, I, I certainly want to meet the needs. I, I've lived in this town a long time. I don't see public, uh, transportation, however, and, and, and again, Michelle, this may, may go towards sharing, uh, great information. Um, you know, I, I hope this come out if it hasn't already, but they've reinstalled the CDT bus route, uh, for Rollin to, uh, Route 50. So there's a start, but if there are people who need to get to work and we're sort of conscious of, um, of, you know, who needs to get where, and, and this may be, you know, one of the small ways we can alleviate some of the, uh, the, the traffic concerns. You know, that, that reinstating the bus route should be in place by the end of the year. You know, it, 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 I imagine we need more of it since I don't see it. I don't happen to use it, so I'm not looking for it. So, so reinstating those bus routes or, or adding additional, uh, adding additional bus routes. And, you know, think, think about some other folks who may need that for different reasons, you know, our seniors. Uh, i- i- if, if you're not driving anymore and you need to get places, definitely want to take care of them. You know, it's a, it's a, it, it, topic I, I wish I knew more about. It's a great, uh, it's a great, great question. Thank you. Thank you for asking that. I, uh, I, 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 I'm trying to think a little bit beyond buses. So let's hear what you got, Michelle.
Thank you.
Um, so, yeah, so it's a, you know, it's a challenging, um, it's always a, it's a challenging issue when municipalities really need to think about, um, you know, the issues of, um, you know, people from diverse economic backgrounds, people with disabilities, um, people, you know, with, um, as you said, aging. And it offers, you know, it does offer us some opportunities. I have thanked Supervisor Ostrander for his efforts about the CDT bus. I do think that that is critical. I had not heard that they had agreed to, um, reinstate it. So that's fantastic news and kudos, um, to the administration for making that happen. Um, it, it needs to happen. I think we need to think broadly, even when we're talking about these traffic studies and intersection studies and, you know, how, uh, how we're going to design that. It's not just thinking about traffic. It is thinking about how people, um, with all kinds of mobility needs will be accessing those intersections and be able to get around our town. Residents do want a walkable town and we, we need to think, um, in terms of that. You know, the, the whole issue of, you know, um, you know, transportation, you know, and again, the people, you know, if you're thinking about aging or people with disabilities needing it, that's a whole economic area that we haven't necessarily explored fully as to what kind of businesses we could be bringing to the town to support people aging in place in our community. So I think, again, it's another, it's an opportunity for us to be more creative in what we're doing.
Thank you. Eric, you would like to use an extra minute?
I'm going to jump on it.
Timer, are you ready?
We're, we're running out of time, but, you know, a- again, when it was talking about that, that relationship between the, between the town and the village, sharing information and, and working together and being conscious that we, we, we share real estate and, and, and these things. You know, Mayor Rossi did work directly with the county to get expansion of CDH service to county facilities, which is, which is great. Um, if there are more opportunities for more facilities that can use that sort of thing. Uh, uh, again, uh, certainly with, uh, seniors, uh, needing access to those facilities. You know, we can go to the county supervisor to ensure that the lines for, uh, bus options, um, are expanded. CDT seems open to those discussions, but we do need to recognize the need and, uh, and, uh, and, and bring that to them. So, um, again, you know, kudos to the collaborative effort between town and village and, and somebody getting to an opportunity quicker than another. And, uh, and, you know, that's why I, I think we need to keep those relationships open because it, it benefits everybody if we're, if we're sharing information and not working in a bubble to try to solve problems or fail to recognize a problem that we, that we have. So, thank you.
Thank you. This is going to be our last question before closing statement. Question is, what is your vision for Milton for the future? What policies or ideas do you support that will improve the quality of life for residents in the town? And this goes to Michelle first.
I want, uh, my vision for the town of Milton is a community of connection. It's a place where we know our neighbors and we, we value those relationships, where we have places where we can gather and be together and where we, um, exchange ideas, um, for the, for the betterment. Um, Eric and I both raised our families here. That really, you know, that means something, that we made the commitment to raise children here. And there were certain, um, community values, um, that we, you know, appreciated and that's why we did that. I'm not so sure that, you know, it's a matter of policies when you talk about these things, but it's a matter of relationship building and that's what I want to do. I want to have a better relationship between our leadership, our town government and the people who live here so that collectively we can build a community that we're all proud of and that we're all, um, excited to be a part of.
Thank you. Eric?
Uh, you know, fir- first thing I, I think of, and as, as Michelle, is, is my children and my family. You know, I, 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 you know, get set in my ways and I'm working hard. And, you know, when you're in school, summer was summer. And now that when you work, summer is just, the days are shorter when you finish your work. But, you know, it, it, it is kind of about our kids and is about the future of our town. So, you know, my vision would look probably something a little bit like a, uh, um, you know, a, a, an old postcard of, uh, of a Norman Rockwell kind of town. We can't have exactly that, but, you know, I, 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 I do wish that development is something we can be proud of, be excited about and, you know, and share with people when they come to town to visit us. But, you know, I think about my friends and my family, you know, my, my friends', uh, network extends pretty far because people I don't communicate with every day or golfing with, I consider my friends because we're, we're all neighbors and that we're all, uh, we're all in it together. We all need to kind of reach the finish line together. But, yeah, definitely, um, definitely something we'd be proud of and definitely not something that looks like, I, I don't think we can become Clifton Park or Westchester, but, um, you know, some, something, uh, a, a little bit more interesting where town center and hopefully some of the beauty and the trees and the, the, the avenues and the park places all, all come together as a place where, where we can, you know, just enjoy town and not try to work around it.
Thank you. It's now time for closing statements. Candidates, you have no more than one minute each. The first to speak will be Michelle Judah.
So thanks again, um, to the League of Women Voters, um, to Eric Del Nicky and to everybody who's joined tonight or will, you know, watch the recording at a later time. It's been a great conversation and I really do wish that we could have more of them. No surprise, you know, Eric's running on, I think, a few tickets, but Republican being one of them. I'm running on the Democratic line. I really do feel that leadership of a local government has nothing to do about being Republican or Democrat. It's about being neighbors and seeking to protect and enhance our quality of life. I want to thank the neighbors who've been talking to me, including those in West Milton and the village, sharing their ideas. I promise to lead differently for us all if I am elected. I'm very proud of my history of calling for good governments, no matter who was in charge. I will applaud where I see that there's things to be applauded and acknowledge success, but in no uncertain terms, I also call for us to do better when I believe we can. And I commit to do more of the same if elected. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Eric Del Nicky.
Respectfully follow Michelle's lead. Thank you, League of Women's Voters. I, as I said at the beginning, nobody else is offering this opportunity. I think this is great for everybody who's able to, uh, able to attend. Um, um, thank you, Michelle. Uh, again, this has been a, a pretty nice and civil and productive process. And, 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 and again, all the attendees who are able to, uh, to log in and watch us and those who may watch us later. You know, a, a participat- participation in, in, uh, in local government is absolutely critical. I'm going to keep kind of pushing for that, thanking people to get, for, for getting involved, sometimes asking difficult or uncomfortable questions. You know, my reasons for, um, seeking the board seat was I, I love Milton. Uh, as my family's home, I have a strong desire to give back because they've been so good to me for 25 plus years. Uh, my eagerness to guide thoughtfully during a period of growth with as much feedback from all residents is, is paramount. Now, some of the, some of the rest of the job is a little bit, you know, nebulous to some folks in town, but all I can do is listen to what I have to say and be a steward for sharing those thoughts and those ideas and concerns and, and hopes and, and be very optimistic about it. So, you know, I, I do feel I'm an optimistic person. I do feel, um,
Thank you. Thank you. Candidates for, the candidates for town justice in Milton recorded statements that are also going to be posted on our YouTube channel and on the League of Women Voter of Saratoga's, um, website. They'll be posted along with this recording tomorrow. Community, please vote on or before Tuesday, November 5th. Candidates, I'm sorry, ballots can be cast on election day between 6:00 AM and 9:00 PM at your local polling place. Early voting begins Saturday, October 26th through November 3rd. Early voting locations are listed on the County Board of Elections website. Information and applications for absentee and early mail-in ballots can also be found on the Saratoga County Board of Elections website. Thank you, candidates, for attending this event and helping to educate voters in Milton. Thank you for a very productive discussion and I thank you, audience members, for showing an interest in your community, both with very robust questions and your attendance. Good night.